Thank you, Ricky. Evening, Mayor and Council and staff and citizens of North Augusta. I wanted to walk down the city council agenda items for tonight. We've got two items for the study session. The first is the council agenda. And the second item is under planning and development, which is the results of the West Martin Town Road Corridor Study and Planning Commission Recommendations. This was brought up at the last council meeting. And council had requested some additional time here in study session to discuss it. So Libby is here along with Ryan to be able to talk a little more in depth about, you know, the results of the study. But first, what I'd like to do is go through the agenda items for tonight, just to make sure we're all aware of what's coming on for the evening. So I'll skip to item number six, under unfinished business, and that's annexation. And so tonight's annexation of the ordinance number 2020-03, to change the corporate limits of the city of North Augusta by annexing plus or minus 0.4 acres of property fronting on Gregory Lake Road and owned by the city of North Augusta ordinance is a final reading. And this, to refresh your memory, is the triangular shaped piece of property near the Gregory Lake Road. It's in your sheets. And so we've shown that map before. And again, this is really more of a GIS housekeeping item, which will allow this little piece of property to be added inside the city limits. And this is required for us to go to the county to close out with their GIS department to make sure all this is ready to go. So that's something we've already done in our first reading. This will be the final reading for annexation, and I'll pause for any questions on. Hearing none, I'll move to new business item number seven, planning and development, resolution number 2021-08, accepting a deed of dedication for the streets, sanitary sewer, stormwater collection and fire suppression systems, and associated easements and rights of way, along with a maintenance guarantee and cash deposit for Gregory Landing, section two. So all this is inside the study packet, but this is a routine item. And this is associated with the development there of Gregory Landing off Gregory Lakes Road. And this is, if you've been to that neighborhood, they've already finished out section one or phase one, and have now added or in the process of adding a second section. So last time we took a drive out there, you've got streets, you've got curbs, you've got stubs, but they have not yet begun to put houses on that, on that piece of real estate. And so this will be the resolution from the city accepting this deed of dedication for those items. So I'll pause for any questions on there unless Libby had anything she wanted. Any questions from council? Hearing none, we'll move to item number eight, finance, ordinance number 2021-04, providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and sewer systems revenue refunding bonds of the city of North Augusta, South Carolina, in the aggregate principal amount of not exceeding $18 million, $500,000, and other matters relating thereto ordinance. This is the first reading, and this is an item that Kami had brought up in a previous session about the ability to refinance some of our bonds for a more advantageous rate for the city. And so Kami, if I could, I'll turn it over to you if there's anything you'd like to add on to that.
Certainly. Good evening. Our bids for the bond refunding were due today. We received eight proposals with rates ranging from 1.8% to 2.45%. And our current loans are at 2%, so anything above that is not something we would view as favorable to move forward with a transaction. We did receive the 1.8% rate from First Community Bank. That will result in savings to the city still. We were hopeful, a little bit closer to a 1.7, but from the time we started working to finalize this deal, the 10-year treasury has gone up 50 basis points. So we feel fortunate to have received the 1.8 rate. We will be able to not have a reserve requirement, so there'll be 1.7 million coming back to us to put into our utility construction fund. And we should be able to close the deal by May 4th is the closing date. If you have any questions, happy to help answer those.
So really, for the city council, this is just, for us, is an opportunity to take advantage of the overall low borrowing rate. We suspect that over time, that's going to not be the case. So this is a fleeting window, if you will, for us to get some additional savings. And it's not a large amount of savings per year. I think it works out to be 15,000 or so per year. But what it does allow us to do is to release our reserves, to be able to put them in other places. So overall, this doesn't cost the city any additional money. It allows us to save some. And my hat's off to Kami and the finance department in running this to ground and just looking for opportunities for us to, you know, be good fiscal stores of the taxpayer dollars. So I'll pause for any questions for either Kami or myself on this topic. I know there's a lot of information out there in the study packet and information as far as bonds, but that's in a very high level, what we're seeking to accomplish here, and I think Kami's done that. So I'll go ahead and pause for questions.
So Kami, I know you were disappointed we got one offer, whatever you call it, below our existing 2%, and you've talked to Walter or somebody, Gary or somebody, and they agree that this makes sense?
Yes, so the total group that was a part of the proposal were our financial advisors with First Tryon, Walter and David Cheatwood, as well as bond counsel. So Gary Pope represented us through the proposal. So he's reviewed it. He's reviewed the proposal by First Community Bank and believes it to be a clean proposal and doesn't have any issues. And bond counsel actually drafted the ordinance that is for your approval this evening.
Okay, great. Appreciate you doing that, you know, getting all those people on board.
Sure.
Okay, hearing no other comments or questions, we'll move on to item number nine, under planning and development, which is resolution 2021-09, authorizing funding for transportation plans and studies for the planning and development department. And so this basically takes some of last year's leftover money, if you will. And again, the money at the end of the year dumps into the capital projects fund, and then applying that against some traffic studies that we have that are listed there in your packet. There's two studies, one is a calming study, but I don't want to steal Libby's thunder. Which studies were you trying to fund, Libby, and what are you trying to accomplish with those studies?
So these will be to continue the funding for the Georgia Avenue study. That's a traffic calming study, basically to connect from the bridge project that we know is coming all the way up the hill. We had expected to get started on that a lot sooner, but COVID kind of slowed everything down, so we haven't been able to get those all the way through SCDOT. The other study, I'm sorry, I'm actually completely blanking.
You've got a city transportation plan for $20,000.
Yes, the overall transportation plan. So that would be to help us identify any overall needs when it comes to problem intersections, intersections where we can identify lots of traffic conflicts, help identify places where we might be able to add a little bit of greenery or realign and just address overall in the city, some of the transportation issues and start working on a better consolidated list to use in arts to get us kind of in the pipeline for additional studies or projects as they come available, as funds come available.
Now, Libby, will that have anything to do with like the markings or the, you know, people, pedestrian crossings on Georgia Avenue, different sections?
The Georgia Avenue project will, yes.
Okay.
That's part of the intent of that is to better address that situation and make sure that we're using SCDOT standards and we can kind of get them on board with that.
Okay, all right, good. Thank you.
Thanks, Libby. I appreciate the wrap up. For the council members, are there any questions about this reallocation of funds for the two studies listed there? Nothing heard? Okay, and then we'll move to under engineering and public works, item number 10, resolution number 2021-1010, authorizing the city administrator to execute a municipal lighting agreement with Dominion Energy, South Carolina, Inc., for the conservation or correction, for the conversion of street lights from high intensity discharge, HID, to light emitting diode, LED type fixtures and setting aside project cost savings to offset potential future cost increases. So this is tying into the presentation that Scott Neely gave from Dominion Energy back in January about the Dominion-owned poles inside the city limits, wherein Dominion Energy would do a retrofit project. We would have no out-of-pocket cost upfront, and then there is a five-year discount period, if you will, for the LED credits. And so what happens is, at the end of the five-year period, we'll be unsure of what our overall rate is going to look like. So what I ask to do, just to be fiscally conservative, is to take the cost savings that we'd have on an annual basis over the five years, roll that into the, I believe, capital projects fund to have that parked there for the purpose of using to pay any excess energy costs if costs were higher than anticipated or higher than baseline starting in year five. So really, this resolution does two things. One, it allows the city to enter into this agreement with Dominion Energy. And then secondly, it allows us to bankroll savings for the purpose of potential energy costs at the five-year mark and beyond. The city council is not sworn to that in the long term, so year five, if it turns out the LED lighting is still cheaper, which we certainly hope for, then we can, or the city council can then at that time reallocate those funds for other purposes inside the capital projects fund. But I wanted to make sure that we weren't going to put the city in a rough place in five years from now if we had unforecasted energy costs. So this does not cover, by the way, any of the ornamental lighting in the city, nor the city-owned poles. This is strictly for the Dominion Energy light fixtures that are throughout our city and through our highways and road networks here. So I'll pause for any questions from the council. I did send you a copy of the read ahead from the last presentation in January, also a copy of the contract. And if that contract is, or if the council votes to approve it, then we'll add that to the minutes as well.
Now, Jim, you said this, like Riverview Park, would not include those lights, like the main thoroughfare through Riverview Park?
Anything with ornamental lighting, ma'am, or anything that's a city-owned pole would not be covered under this, and that's a separate project. So for example, Tom Zieser's crew through engineering ended up retrofitting a number of the lights in the municipal center's parking lot. So you saw that they made a change there on the poles, ornamental poles, and that was a self, kind of self-help project, if you will, to go ahead and make those changes. So this isn't to say that we can't do that on other fixtures through a different initiative through the city, but this is strictly for Dominion Energy to be allowed to retrofit the Dominion poles.
Also, Riverview.
I'm sorry, I've got councilman present now. Let me take you first in the council.
The poles in Riverview Park through the main thoroughfare have already been done. They're solar powered LEDs that they had installed last year. Those wouldn't need to be redone.
That's my understanding as well, councilman. That was a city project, not a Dominion project for my. Councilman Brooks, I'm sorry, I already.
Okay. Are we making any plans for the residential areas, streetlights to be replaced some point in the future with LED fixtures?
Well, sir, I think the answer is it depends. So some of the residential areas are already covered by Dominion poles, and some of them are not. So we have to kind of look at those on a case-by-case basis. We have not done a full analysis across the city as of yet to see how many ornamental poles would potentially be needing to be retrofitted. And we're still looking at the city aspects of, you know, those poles. And I would probably recommend more starting with kind of West Avenue and Georgia Avenue on those poles from an LED perspective first. And we're still some lessons learned. Even when did the parking lot as a city project, we had some discovery learning that went along with that as we started retrofitting the devices. And different poles have different technical specifications and different techniques, if you will, for retrofitting those lights. So that's a long answer to say is, yes, I think we can. But what I would use a more detailed analysis on, you know, what the city can do in-house or what we can do with Dominion Department. But I wanted to at least take this as an initial stab at getting LED lighting in the city.
Thank you. Mr. Clifford, I had one question. I know we briefly talked about this before. I had one citizen call me and ask me about the Dark Sky Association or Initiative, and I didn't know if you had any further knowledge on this LED lighting system, if it was compliant with, I guess, for lack of better understanding of it, light pollution projected past where it should cover and stuff like that.
Councilman, I'm going to look here on my email real quick, but I was pretty sure that you had asked me that in email, and that I think the answer was yes, but I can't remember if I had responded to you directly on that one, but I see Libby raising her hand, so.
This is one of those odd confluence with planning information, if you don't mind me jumping in right quick, but almost all of these new fixtures are very well hooded. And that's part of the Dark Skies Initiative is to make sure that the top hood of those lights protects the light down instead of creating light pollution up and out.
Great. I figured it probably new technology included that. I just wanted to answer to the person who asked me that specifically as a concern. So that sounds great. I figured that's probably the case.
Sir, I'll go back and look through my email. I'm pretty sure that we had asked that question of Scott Neely and gotten a response. And if that didn't make it for my best two years, my apologies, but I'll make sure you've got something that you could pass to a constituent if required.
I do have it, Mr. Clifford. I was just double checking, but thank you.
Mayor Pettit, did you have something?
Well, I do, but Tom wants to add something first.
I was just going to add on top of that, that these LED fixtures, they also provide Dominion with the ability to control the light output from these fixtures. I can't imagine that we'd want to dim them, but in the event that, I mean, there could be a location where after a certain period of time, you know, if we wanted Dominion to dim fixtures, they would have that ability with these LED fixtures.
Well, two things. One, just to comment, you know, the stadium lighting is LED, and it, you know, was initial concern about light pollution outside the stadium, and you see it's very, very well controlled, those lights, which you wouldn't have with the old. Kelly, this question's kind of based on experience, I guess, but in Article Six, it says that we would be billed for extraordinary work, basically, I think, if somebody ran into the pole or vandalism, if they couldn't recover from a third party. Do we have any experience with that? Is that an issue or just, you know, something to note and just accept experience as being very minimal?
In my history here, we have never had to come out of pocket for a Dominion-owned pole or fixture to be replaced.
Okay, you know, I just caught my eye when I was reading it as one of those things that jumped out at me, but thanks, Tom. I appreciate that. I think that's all I have. Obviously, I'm in favor of this, particularly with the experience we have that would. Obviously, I'm in favor of this, particularly with the experience we have with that one light on East Avenue Wood Lawn, if you've seen that, it, I think it's a real benefit. Thank you.
So just one last item as a sales, the project is the fact that they have monitoring ability, as Tom was talking about, and not so much to be able to dim the lights, although that's true, but it also informs them when the light goes out. So if there is an issue with a LED light going out of, out of service, Dominion is immediately notified, you know, via electronic means, and then they can deal with the problem as opposed to having to have the time delay of a citizen calling the city and reporting a light out at a street, and then, you know, getting that into the right channels and then getting that, you know, fixed through Dominion. So it does shorten the flash to bang, if you will, from a notification of a problem to actually solving it. So I think that's also a potentially good, good option here for the city. So that's all I have as far as my sales pitch hat today, but I'll take any other questions from the council or from.
I'd like to just add, I'm glad to see us do this. I think it's something we should have done a while ago. I'm just glad that Dominion has this program now. And to reiterate kind of what Bob Brooks said, I think we need to be looking beyond just what this program is of the kind of Cobra Head type lights. We need to look into the ornamental lights, especially, I think downtown, I think there's a decent amount of downtown, if I'm not mistaken, that are city owned lights, that that's probably a city issue, but to me, lighting is key, and, and some people may not care, but I'm the guy that it bothers when I go in a room and you've got a, two different color light bulbs in the same room. And, and I think as we start putting in these new lights, the increased visibility, the better look of it is, is going to kind of show that some of our old, other lights are old looking. And so I just want us to, I know I'm a relative short timer at this point, but hope that the city and council can, can make it a priority to be looking at the rest of the lights in the city, especially along our major thoroughfares.
Thank you, councilman. Are there any other questions or comments from? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to item number 11, under finance. This will be a Kami discussion, but this is resolution number 2021-11, resolution authorizing funding allocation recommendations for the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee for the dispersments of revenues from the accommodations tax year 2019 to 2020. And then if you look into your packet, you can see the breakdown of those, those funds for a total of $72,244.35, and that's spread across the North Augusta Chamber of Commerce, First Providence Foundation, 29841 Incorporated, which has to do with Carsville, North Augusta Forward, Old Town Preservation Association, Aiken County PRT, Augusta Rowing Club, FWB Fund Incorporated, North Augusta PRT for two separate items, one for the amphitheater and one for the Riverview Park upgrade, and lastly for the Van Johnson Game Plan Sports for Peach Jam Advis, advertisements and operations. So again, those come to a grand total of $74,000, but I'll defer to Kami if she has any comments she'd like to make about the A-Tax Committee and their recommendation.
Jim, I actually, go ahead, Kami.
I don't have any additional comments unless you all have questions.
And this is a program that Mandy hands up, if I remember, accepts the application and as, as part of that committee, which is required by law. I do have a curious question. What is FWB Fund? Does anybody know what the acronym is?
That is Friends With Benefits. They're an organization that helps to book musical acts at the amphitheater and various other places. I did want to mention that Rick is also on the call and can take questions as well.
Thank you, Rachel. I do, just give me another second with Rick. The, where did that go? The streaming facility upgrade, is that the one that you presented the last year or a year and a half ago that was not funded, so we get an opportunity to increase the streaming in the activity center for Peach Jam and things like that?
That would be correct.
Okay, well, that's a good one. I'm glad we're able to do that, particularly in today's day and age where live streaming of things is, you know, a major, well, I don't understand how to do it, but the younger people sure catch on and do it all the time, so thank you, Rick.
Yes, sir.
And my question, this is trying to be funny, but on the Peach Jam amount requested 13.8, and we showed them like $3.15, is that a reason for that or just?
I suspect they use that pad to round the money to what was available.
Oh, okay. I didn't know, throw that in, that $3.15.
Well, it looks like it balances now, and that makes Kami smile, I see that, so.
Okay.
She'd lose sleep if it didn't.
Mr. Clifford, I maybe just misread it or something. Did you say 72,000? Because our sheet says 74,000 something, was that just a mistake?
Well, I must have misread that then, councilman, because I'm looking at the same sheet, I believe, and it says 74,244.35, so seven four, two four four, decimal three five.
Yeah, you did say it the first time, and then you corrected it the second time, 74.
I've got a question, and I guess this is directed towards Rick, and it's our, what was approved in here of $10,000 for the Sharon Jones Amphitheater Concert Event Operations? Specifically, what is that money intended to be spent on as far as quote "event operations"?
Thank you, Fletcher, that's a combination of the stage and sound, and then any leftover towards the actual payment of the entertainment for the event.
Okay, so you're talking about for the dedication?
Correct.
Okay, but there, and I was curious if it was stuff for the dedication or if we were buying some physical assets that would benefit the city long term in the use of the amphitheater, but it sounds like that, that's a yes, you're saying we're buying stage and sound equipment?
Well, no, we're not buying it, we're actually renting for the event.
Oh, okay, so this is for the one time event?
Correct.
Okay. How are we handling ongoing stuff there?
As far as?
Stage, sound, so forth.
Well, whenever we have a renter, that's part of their deal right now. Of course, our long-term plan is to purchase a mobile stage, and we actually have some grant funding for that, we just don't have enough currently, that didn't quite get into the budget, and hopefully if, if 2021 goes well and, and all, we'll be able to potentially bring that back in at mid-year, maybe.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Yes, sir.
I've got a quick question. The one thing I see on here, and it's a little under $1,200, is Rowing News Magazine advertisement for Langley Pond, and it's going to the Aiken County Parks and Recreation. Why are we, that doesn't benefit North Augusta, in my opinion, unless I'm wrong, but is there any specific reason why we're giving it to them and not doing something here in town?
Eric, I'm going to take a stab at this, if Kami has anything to add, but that rowing will benefit North Augusta, as a lot of the functions they have, when they're bringing folks in, like an NCAA coaches conference, they're going to be staying at the Crown Plaza Hotel and using that for their conference.
All right, good enough. I just wanted to make sure it benefited us somehow, because you know, that is, you know, an eight mile drive out of town, but yeah, if it's, if it's bringing in people for the regattas and stuff, yeah, that, that's, that'll be fine.
So for Mr. Mayor and Council, I would say that's the, kind of the end of our major muscle movements here for the agenda, and I'd like to just pause, see if there are any final questions for the agenda, but we've got about 30 minutes left, and I figured we could use that time to go into item two of the study session, which really is the Martin Town Road Transportation Study, Corridor Study with Libby, with Ryan, and see if we can answer your questions as we go forward that. So let me just pause for any questions or concerns or comments about the agenda for tonight, and I'll stand by. Okay, hearing none, I'd like to move on to the second item on the agenda for tonight on the study session, which is the review, if you will, of the West Martin Town Road Corridor Study and Planning Commission Recommendations. So I'm going to turn this over to Libby and to Ryan to go ahead and talk to a little bit about what the, the results were and what is, before you as a council, again, this is a study session item, not a voting item for tonight, so we just want to make sure you were informed on, you know, what the contents of this study are, and you've had a chance to review it now, and so Libby, I want to turn this over to you for, for the...
Okay, thank you. As stated in the cover memorandum, we were forwarding the recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding this study. As you know, the study's been going on for close to a year now. We had a little bit of a pause in the middle due to the receipt of some additional development information from one of the major developers on the corridor, and since this was supposed to be taking that into account, we paused for a moment to, to make sure that was part of the study. I, I can go over the, the project prioritization, if that's helpful for you. I believe all that information was included in your supplemental materials for the study session. The Planning Commission did, they recommended the five main projects that they thought were the priority for the corridor, and they also recommended that, or requested that the council take a closer look at how we could potentially fund some of these projects, and that's where the local funding brief has, has really come in, and that's totally up to council. We can talk about that, we may have to get into, to bigger details later, but I would also like to introduce Ryan Eckenrode, he's our Transportation Engineer that helped us complete the project from AECom. If, I guess, do y'all want me to go through the, the primary projects, or do you want to just ask questions or?
Hey, Libby, can I just recommend, if we would, can you just kind of list out the top five without going into all the details per se, just so the, the audience at, at home can, can hear it as well?
Certainly, so the top five projects for the Planning Commission were the signalization of Nobcon Avenue, the development of a parallel road on the west side of West Martin Town from Frontage Road along Old Plantation, that would be across from Nobcon Avenue. I'm sorry, that would be the, the parallel access to make a controlled access in that area. The third is Nobcon Avenue to Hammond Pond Road, that would be a new connecting road. Fourth is the I-20 westbound off-ramp dual lane roundabout, and fifth is Gregory Lake Road, single lane roundabout.
Really, as Libby's pointed out, is you've got a variety of projects here, some of them involve signalization, some of them involve minor movements of roads, and then also the inclusion of traffic circles or roundabouts, depending on which part of the country you're from, north of I-20, and the intention of that is to make sure that we don't have, you know, a one mile stretch of, you know, five or six traffic lights and cause a lot of problems there. So there's, there's a bit of a mix, if you will, on some of the traffic patterns and solutions that were recommended by the, the Planning Commission as this is going forward. And I think as you all know, there's, there's a significant amount of potential growth there in that quarter. You have the exit one, you know, plot of land, if you will, that's, that's currently looked at being developed, and then you have a number of subdivisions that are under construction north of I-20 on both Oregon and Gregory Lake Road, and then potentially other developments in the future that are north of I-20 as well, as yet to be named or determined. So, you know, I think it's good for the council to at least consider these as something to look at long-term traffic mitigation, because whatever problems you think we have now near exit one on Martin Town Road are going to be exacerbated over time, you know, with more traffic without, without additional calming patterns, if you will, or traffic signals. So I'll, I'll stop talking there before I get into deep end all by myself, as Libby's laughing at me, and I'll turn it back over to her and to Ryan. Ryan, is there anything you wanted to add from your perspective from the study?
Yeah, I mean, from a visual perspective for everyone here, I mean, I would say look at the concept figures in the report, if you have them, usually visualization of what we're recommending along the entire corridor, rather than just the, the words mentioning which, which recommendation is would help. But it's, it's not just a, a combination of just mixing up signals and roundabouts, I mean, using the public's comments about the speed along West Martin Town Road going down that hill, the SCDOT only allowing so many signals within a, a certain spacing, which is a quarter mile based on this type of road. It also really just comes down to safety. Very, I mean, if anything, very few people or anybody really dies in a roundabout vehicular. People die in signals because people go through them at these fast speeds or they get T-boned, and it's, it's a combination of both, just look, getting the, and also multimodal, just slowing vehicles along West Martin Town Road for pedestrians, it'll feel a lot more safe if someone's going by them at 25 miles an hour versus 45, and just the overall need for a signal. A signal's typically only needed for a couple hours a day. A roundabout is going to work fine in the middle of the night, you know, the other 20 hours of the day, it's a lot more efficient, better for the environment, emissions, and there's some places, I think the roundabout at Gregory Lake, you need a, you need left turn lanes for a signal. For a roundabout, you don't need left turn lanes or exclusive turn lanes, you just need one way to enter it, and there's some grade issues at Gregory Lake Road, which is some justification for roundabout there. Also, the intersection aligns 90 degrees, there's an acute angle, creating sight distance issues where a roundabout cleans that up. So, I mean, there is other, I mean, there's a lot of fact, a lot of decisions went into whether a roundabout or a signal should be there, and just kind of wanted to get into that kind of detail, but if you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Ryan, that's a lot more eloquent of a explanation than my randomly placed signals and roundabouts initial discussion was, so thanks for, thanks for weighing.
Ryan, I, Bob, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Under the second recommendation, Frontage Road to Old Plantation Road, Libby is, Old Plantation Road is part of that, a private driveway? And if it is, what are we going to do? Are we going to upgrade the Old Plantation Road as potentially turning that back into the intersection at Nobcon? Whether the signal light will be signaled?
So there's, there's two separate projects, Ryan, do you want to talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, sure, if you wanted to just kind of share that concept so everybody understands what we're talking about. Yeah, Old Plantation Road is not a state maintained road, it's owned by, I guess, the county road or city. I was wondering if you want to bring that up maybe, or whoever's sharing a screen, or can I do it?
Ryan's able to share his screen, Rachel, is that?
Yeah, I can do that. Just a moment.
Yeah, won't let me do it. Give us just a second, sorry about the delay. There you go, Ryan.
All right. I think I just clicked on. Is it showing?
No, there it goes.
Okay. So, Old Plantation Road, I think we haven't looked, Plantation Drive, is this road right here. You've got Nobcombe Avenue. This is oriented, I guess, north is to the left, south is to the right. I guess the first recommendation is to develop a parallel road that runs behind the Circle K, I believe, and connects to these proposed apartments back here, Cross Creek. And the reasoning for that is, we did a complete crash analysis along West Martin Town Road between Frontage Road, I mean, the whole corridor. And there was a significant number of crashes occurring in front of the gas station, Waffle House, all the way to New Connector Road. And one of the recommendations in the report is to basically put a concrete median down the middle here, where vehicles to access the Circle K or would basically have to go past it and kind of circle around into it coming from the south. And those vehicles leaving the Circle K would have to make a right turn and go down and U-turn at the signal. And a lot of that's just access management. There's too much going on here, a lot of driveways. And, you know, get the safety part, we also give them another way out. And if we could have a backdoor road that goes behind everything, that connects to the apartments and everything, they could take that down here to this new signal and make a left turn out at the signal. And same way coming in, instead of making a U-turn, they can make a left turn at the signal and go back to wherever they need to go, the Frontage Roads, or go to the Circle K. But it's just, it does open up a lot of room for development, too. And if you have a parallel road back here that kind of connects everything to a signal. So that was kind of the justification there. And just the number of crashes along here was a lot. They've got one, two, three, four driveways for a gas station, and everybody's using a different one, going in and out. And I'll start-
Go ahead. You said coming out of Circle K, they'd have to make a right, so there'd be no more left?
Correct. Everybody would just come out here and make a right. I mean, unless you're going southbound, you know, coming from interstate, make a right, get your gas, then go back to your house. But if you are trying to make a left turn out, you would have to go down here and make a U-turn, when we provide ample room to do that, obviously. And you'd go back up to wherever you're going.
Yes, where Burger King is, coming out of Burger King on Martin Town, because you can't make a right turn. You have to make, I mean, you have to make a right turn, can't make a left on that one, and then circle back the U-turn.
Very similar. It's a very similar, similar situation. There's just a lot of driveways going on in that little stretch.
Yeah, yeah. I was at, I liked it, got smashed.
Y'all still see my screen?
No.
Okay.
Yes, I can see it.
You can see my screen with the, so here's, here's an image of all the crashes. The yellow are injury crashes, the circles are T-bone crashes, the squares are rear end or other rear end or starts. So you can see over a five-year period, there was a significant number of crashes right in front of the gas station. That led to just some of the access management, to put a concrete median down to force vehicles to, you know, control the access to make them take a right and go make a U-turn.
Now, can I ask, what happened about the property? It used to be, I think, of Ms. Collins. Her daughter is Alex McLean, who I think now, because Ms. Collins passed away. Alex lives there. You know, for a while, we were trying to get just a little tiny piece of that land for the widening, if my memory is correct. But has anything been done with that Ms. McLean and the property? Or have y'all talked, have they talked with her?
I can address that. We have not made any strides towards that at the moment. We have been waiting to see how council feels about these proposals. Nothing is written in stone. You know, these aren't engineered plans. These are just, this is just a study and the recommendations of the study. So if, some of it depends on if, you know, at the will of the council, we can reopen those discussions again.
Okay, so if the council approves this, then you would start the discussion with her?
That's correct.
And just while we're talking to this median right here, concrete in front of Plantation Drive, that really, we want to keep that full movement until we can kind of get this new connector in here, just because there's so much traffic or additional development that serves Plantation Drive. We wouldn't want, we could have them make a right and make a quick U-turn, but it's really when the Hammock Farms driveway gets connected here and all that traffic gets built out there. So a lot of these recommendations are kind of in different tiers. This is, what I'm showing here is what I hope that's there in twenty years from now, with everything all built out and everything goes the way development is projected. But this would probably remain full access until we could try to get this new connector in and all that, just a heads up. So.
I certainly think it's a novel concept, a great idea. And I think signalization of Nobcombe has got to be high on the priority. There's just too many high schoolers driving there and making turns every day. And we, you know, that new connector then makes perfect sense for it to be the signal. So I think that's a great suggestion. And the parallel Frontage Road, being able to connect with the apartments also solves if you have them there, I think. So that's, this is great.
Very good.
Now, coming off I-20, the little ramp, you know, that to me is so dangerous. And a lot of people are now that say that coming off, it's just scary. Is, and I know all this is coming up and with the widening of I-20 and all that, but is this going, is not going to be that way permanently, right? And then is anything could be done now to make it a little bit safer, safer than it is?
Ms. Carpenter, they're working on that right now.
Okay, good, good.
So there was, there was a little bit of realignment that was happening with the new lights that are going in.
Yeah.
I believe there was some other outside influence that would happen. But they are working on that right now.
Good, thank you.
I've got a real quick question on the proposed, Ryan, on the proposed traffic circles. Now, I've been to the one up above going to Lake Murray, but again, you've got two two-lane highways coming together. You know, there's places in Augusta, there's places in neighborhoods where they work. How in the world does it work with a four-lane road with people, you know, getting on and off? I'm hoping you can explain that, because I don't think I'd be a big fan of it unless I can see how it's, how it's going to work.
All right, absolutely. Well, one thing this traffic circle has, and maybe the other ones you're not talking about, is the majority of the heavy trucks and also the major volumes, they don't even go into the traffic circle. You got a bypass lane to go towards Georgia, you have a big loop ramp, again, goes Georgia. So the most heavy movements, one of those moves, don't even enter the roundabout. So the only conflict you have going to the roundabout is only this guy getting off the off-ramp. And he's asked to look to his left, make sure he has a gap, and that's it, pretty much. And so you have this, the only guy who is going into the roundabout. Everybody else is pretty much just going through. You're not going to go on the wrong way, onto the wrong interstate. So really, they're just going through. It's essentially a, I mean, I'm just a glorified speed hump for really going down the straight. They're going to be going twenty-five miles an hour through the roundabout, instead of forty-five miles, fifty miles an hour down the hill, and then come to their first signal. And one of the things I kind of fear, if I put a signal here, I mean, you could put one here, and operationally, it'll probably work okay. But, you know, you know, you're going down the hill, a big truck trailer, big car, and if they don't stop, and you know, they see the light turn red and run it, you know, this guy thinks he's getting around, you might get a really bad collision. I mean, today, people know these people aren't going to stop. If there's a red light here, they don't stop and they go. I mean, you're setting up for a really horrific collision downhill pulling out here. So this would definitely stop vehicles going fast. And if they do run the roundabout, it's a twenty-five mile an hour collision, which is well survivable versus a fifty mile, fifty mile an hour collision T-bone, which you're not going to probably survive. So that was one of the things, too. And one of the public comments was, people are speeding down this road, and they're going to get the, you know, and this is just one way to slow them down. A traffic signal will not slow somebody down. If anything, it's probably going to speed up if they see it about to turn it. But if we're trying to slow people down, is that majority of people are coming down here and they're going to be taking a right at Bergen, which has got the signal. So that's kind of, that's kind of, it's a four-lane, I mean, a four-lane, it's roundabout, but it's really, there's not, it's not a full four legs. There's only really three legs to it. And this one leg is the only really conflict entering it. These vehicles aren't having to yield too much. I mean, really, people going southbound aren't yielding anybody, because these vehicles aren't going to go around in front of them. They're going to keep going through. So there's going to be very little yielding.
I'd like to point out, too, that it looks like there's a bypass lane going down to Bergen as well, so that you could get off on the exit ramp and just go straight to Bergen Road.
Well, that's, yeah. That's actually, that's not, I think, you're talking about this?
Yeah.
That's actually, yeah. We could put that in there if we needed to, but our, we could put that, and I didn't put it in there, and it only make it better, I guess. We could do the bypass lane. People are worried. We could do a bypass lane here. The only thing it does, it creates a weave. There's no one going over here yet. But in the future, you don't want vehicles having to shift over a bunch of lanes to get the left turn lane. You want them coming in here so they can get directly into it. But that's, that's down the road if this gets developed.
Let me address Eric's question. I have a lot of experience with traffic circles and four-lane and, you know, four-lane, two lanes in each direction on the crossroads. And it doesn't take long for people to figure out what lane they want to get into going into the circle if they're getting off quickly. And you'd be surprised how it really does expedite traffic and safely. And, you know, I think it's just the right solution there. There's nothing that aggravates me more than to come to a traffic light at ten o'clock at night, and there's not, you know, it's red, and you're not a car for the next three minutes while I'm waiting, whereas here, it just expedites travel. Trucks can handle it. You know, I think it's, you know, we got one in Riverside Village, and it keeps things flowing. And there's a number of other ones around. So I, my own personal experience is it's very, very effective, safe, and desirable right now.
I guess the big thing I'm looking at is someone coming off of I-20, you know, they're heading, that would be westbound, I'm assuming. I'm assuming this is not the scale, because I'm just looking at the road, and I don't know how many times I've come through there pulling a trailer. And we're talking about eighteen-wheelers coming around that, or people with campers or boats. Is there going to be enough room for them to be able to use? I mean, I'm assuming this is not the scale. It's just, you know, and it's hard to really imagine it, but, you know, I could see being a choke point. If they're trying to get through at five o'clock in the afternoon, traffic's going to be backed up on I-20 westbound trying to turn left. I mean, I've come through there several times. It's usually not that bad. Usually, it's your, it's your eastbound ramp that has all the traffic. So, I mean, I'm just asking that. Is there enough room to get an eighteen-wheeler or somebody pulling a camper through that roundabout with that and staying in their lane?
Absolutely.
Yeah, two things on that. One, we've had, we've had some videos that show the presentation of Planning Commission where large vehicles and oversized vehicles can make it through the traffic circle, and also the way, so even though you've got this large circle there in the middle, you can still drag wheels over a portion of that. The other thing that I would, I'll have to go back and look it up, but I came back from a road trip to North Carolina, and we, my family and I pit stopped at a spot off the interstate, and that was my first exposure to a traffic circle at the exit ramp. And it worked surprisingly well. And actually, they had circles on both exit ramps coming, you know, both, both sides of the highway. And, you know, we were able to get around there real quickly. And I thought it was a pretty good experience. And I just can't remember whether it was on the North Carolina or South Carolina side of the border. I'll have to go back and look that up.
I don't exactly where it is.
Yeah, you can, you can Google I-77 in Davidson, North Carolina, exit thirty. They have four traffic circles back to back to back, two at the off-ramps, and then two serving the commercial development off to the right that's constructed today. Off I-77 and Davidson, North Carolina, exit thirty. That's an example of where they've got just four in a row, two at the off-ramps, and then two more. But, I mean, traffic circles, you really don't want to combine them too much with signals, because you have to make sure the signals don't queue back into the roundabouts and stuff like that. But in this scenario, there's a good five hundred feet here. I mean, ideally, it'd be nice if there may be a traffic circle here, but, I mean, the signals are getting installed. I know, is it already installed, I guess, Libby, or about to be?
Pretty close.
Yeah. So, I mean, it should function, I mean, it will function well enough. That's why we kind of left the two lanes here going through. We make sure we have enough room for stacking distance if it queues back a little bit. And then, of course, that one lane drops after passing the roundabout. But most people in this lane is going to be making a right. You go to Bergen. There's a big, there's a lot of velmit on Bergen, and most of the movement, you're going back and forth like this. And then volume significantly drops off after Bergen Road. I mean, from the study, I think it goes from like eighteen thousand a day down to five just after Bergen. So there's a big drop off.
If I can, I know we're running out of time. If I can comment real quick. If you wouldn't mind going back up to Nobcombe area. Yeah, thank you. The only thing, problem I see, or not problem, thing I don't like on the recommended projects, is I like the new connector here. I think that is, makes a lot of sense, connecting to Old Plantation. I think it's a waste of money and unfeasible to connect Old Plantation all the way over to the apartment complex. I mean, there's some serious topography challenges there. I think the expense of doing that, I don't know, is worth the money. I think if you're going to live in that apartment complex, you've just got to know you're, you're going to have to turn right. And that's just the challenges of living there, because I think that's about all the good it's going to do. Yes, maybe the, the gas station could connect to it, but that gas station has a fifteen-plus-foot tall wall, retaining wall behind it because of the topography issue. So I think the cost of that, in my opinion, doesn't warrant, or the benefits aren't going to warrant the cost there. But I think the new connector between, that connects Plantation over to Nobcombe, I think that's, makes a whole lot of sense, such that all Savannah Barney and all of there can come out at a traffic light, because coming out of Plantation Drive, you really kind of take your life in your own hands currently. So other than that, I think what's been suggested are some really good projects.
And I'll add to that. The entire study, the traffic volumes assumes that this is not built, actually. This is more of a convenience, more, you know, not convenience, but just to help out those who don't like to make U-turns and right turns out to get another way out. But all the traffic volumes for the 2040 assume this road has no part in the traffic volume development, if that makes sense. It's just really a relief valve. West Martin Town Road's corridor is going to operate better if this is installed, but it's still going to operate fine if it never does get installed. I think-
Thank you, Ryan.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ryan, that's been a great help. Appreciate your input. We're running up against a hard stop here. Start council meeting very quickly. So, you know, if you have any more questions, certainly get with, get with Libby, and I know she can get you answers. And this, you know, this is a long-term plan. It's got to go through arts and a whole bunch of other steps to get funded. So it's a great start and a great study. You know, I appreciate it. Libby, anything quick?
Very quickly, I just want to mention that public comments are still open, and they will remain open until this gets to council for their formal consideration. So, public comments are still open. You can visit the website, northaugusta.net, and just, you know, you're welcome to send, send it to us email. You're welcome to call us, however you want to get that to us.
Thanks, Libby. Getting this to council in April during one of the two-
I'm sorry.
That concludes the study session for this evening, and I would- I'm just, that concludes the study session uh, for this evening and I would turn it over to you for uh, city council.
Okay, uh, consensus, anybody need a quick stop before we get started? We're right up at seven. Wave at me or something. Okay, Ryan, thank you very much. Uh, Rachel, you can take care of the screen for us.
Yeah, I'm trying to, there we go.
There we go. Okay, uh, had a great study session tonight and apologize for being a minute late. Uh, but I'd like to call this uh, regular city council meeting to order and I'd ask you to stand for the indication and for pledge. Dear God, daylight savings time is on. This signals that summer is rapidly approaching. Uh, and also signals that the Masters Golf Tournament is not too far away. Uh, while it's a different year, uh, we still expect visitors to be here and we know our city crews are gonna be out making the city look as presentable as it always does, just in a few minor touch-ups. Uh, we ask that they and all of our city employees remain safe. Um, we're still in virtual sessions, dear God, because uh, the threat of the coronavirus remains ever-present in our daily lives. Uh, those that are rested and fortunate enough to be vaccinated, uh, still, we ask you to keep us aware of others and to do our very best to prevent the spread of this disease. We're so thankful for these council members who spend time uh, dealing with the issues before the city, uh, providing valuable input and expertise uh, on all the problems and certainly we're appreciative of our city staff as they go about the daily task of keeping the city functioning as well. So as we go into the spring, please keep all of our city employees safe and healthful. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Get my papers set up here. Moving on, uh, let's see, one. Can I see one, two? Okay, it looks like we're all here. Uh, we were before. Just wanted to make sure. So uh, chair in the roll call show that everyone is present tonight. Uh, moving on to uh, people with minutes, item number four, council, you've been provided the study session and council meeting minutes of our meetings on March first of this year. Uh, if there are no additions or corrections, they'll stand approved as provided. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number five, a proclamation uh, which I will read. Uh, a proclamation for Disabilities Awareness Month. And whereas many North Augusta families are impacted by severe lifelong disabilities, including autism, traumatic brain injuries, spinal cord injuries and intellectual and related disabilities. And whereas people with lifelong disabilities are productive citizens deserving of respect and the opportunity for economic self-sufficiency, independence and personal growth. And where it is important for all North Augusta citizens, those with and those without disabilities, work together, play together, worship together, learn together and grow together. And whereas family members, caregivers and service providers selflessly offer daily care, assistance, supervision and physical and emotional support to individuals with disabilities to help them enjoy full participation in community life. And whereas the twenty-one, twenty twenty-one Observance of Disabilities Awareness Month celebrates thirty-two years of advocacy for and successes of people with disabilities in education, employment and community activities. Now therefore, I, Robert Pettit, mayor, do hereby proclaim march as Disabilities Awareness Month and encourage all citizens in North Augusta to continue to work together to promote increased opportunities for people with disabilities, to recognize the many contributions made by those people in our communities and to honor the dedication of the caregivers who bring necessary support and essential hope to their fellow citizens. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number six. Under unfinished business, this is ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero three. To change the corporate limits of the City of North Augusta by annexing plus or minus zero point four acres of property fronting on Gregory Lake Road and owned by the City of North Augusta. This is the fin, the second and final reading. Do I have a motion to approve this, adopt this ordinance? I hear Mr. McGee. Uh, second is Mr. Brooks. That's fair. Okay. Uh, I received the information from Ms. Lamar today that there were no comments received on any of the items on uh, the agenda nor for the uh, public comment period at the end. So we'll dispense with those, council. Uh, any discussions on this annexation ordinance? Hearing none. Uh, again, I'll call the uh, vote by roll call. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Dicker?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Presnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
And the chair also votes yes. Uh, the ordinance is adopted by vote of seven to zero. Okay, moving on to new business.
Mr. Mayor, you're muted.
heavier than, sorry, papers heavier than I thought. I apologize. Item number seven, planning and development, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero eight. Accepting a deed of dedication for the street sanitary sewer, stormwater collection and fire suppression systems and associated easements and lots of ways along with a maintenance guarantee and cash deposit for Gregory Landing, section two. Do I have a motion to approve this resolution on?
So moved.
Ms. Carpenter, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tool? Thank you. Uh, anything unique or ordinary, uh, Mr. Administrator, that we need to understand about this uh, action?
Yes, sir. This is a routine action that the city conducts with our developers as they turn over or prepare to, to move to their, their next phase. This is in the Gregory Landing uh, development uh, north of I twenty. Uh, and this is a welcome addition to the city. And so my recommendation uh, is that the, the city uh, adopt this as a resul.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Uh, call for the vote, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Dicker?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Presnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Uh, the resolution is approved by a vote of seven unanimously, by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number eight, uh, finance action item, ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero four. Providing for the issuance and sale of waterworks and sewer system revenue refunding bonds of the City of North Augusta, South Carolina in the aggregate principal amount not exceeding eight million, five hundred thousand dollars and other matters relating thereto. This in ordinance, do I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading?
So moved. Second.
Mr. Presnell and uh, Mr. Dicker. Uh, Kami, um, do you want to provide some background or Jim, it's up to you, but Kami, uh?
I'll take a quick stab at it, uh, Mr. Mayor and Kami can, uh, have a deep end, which is really for the citizens watching at home right now. Uh, this is an opportunity for the city to refinance uh, you know, one of our bonds uh, at a lower interest rate. So what uh, our finance director, Kami Hayes, was able to get through a bidding process was a new rate of one point eight percent, uh, which is uh, more beneficial for the city, uh, which saves us money in the long term. It also uh, relieves us of a requirement to maintain uh, a large portion of funds uh, as a reserve uh, that can be freed up now for other construction projects uh, in our utilities department. So in broad strokes, that's what we're trying to accomplish with this action. Uh, but uh, Kami Hayes, I'll turn it back to you.
I don't have anything additional to add. Thank you.
I, I would just say that this is not a uh, an additional encumance of debt. This is just uh, refinancing existing debt. Is that correct, Kami? She nodded yes.
That's correct.
And, and Mayor, I might have misunderstood what you said, but I thought you said eight million, but it's eighteen million, correct?
If I did, if I did, it's uh, principal amount not exceeding eighteen million, five hundred thousand dollars. Thank you. Any discussion from council? Mr. Dicker?
I would just like to say thanks to Kami and staff for, for doing this. I think this is a, a great opportunity for the city and for the citizens to save some money. Um, as well as put some funds that citizens have already paid to the city that have been kind of sitting to the side as, as a requirement of the current bonds to be sitting there as reserve, uh, to be able to use those so that citizens can get some benefit. So kudos to staff. Good job on this. Um, this is an easy vote.
Thank you. I'll second that. Any uh, further comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Uh, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Dicker?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Presnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
And the chair also votes yes. Uh, the ordinance is approved by a vote of seven to zero unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to item number nine, this for planning and development, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero nine. Authorizing funding for transportation plans and studies for the planning and development department. Do I have a motion to adopt, approve this resolution?
So moved.
Ms. Carpenter, do I have a second?
I, I will second.
Jim, you and Libby want to jump in on this?
Mr. Mayor, I would say for the, the citizens at home, uh, that missed the study session, that really what we're asking from the council is to uh, reallocate uh, sixty-three thousand dollars in total uh, out of our twenty twenty uh, budget year surplus, uh, twenty thousand dollars of which is gonna go to the city transportation plan. Um, and uh, that is a co-funded event where the uh, the arts funding is covering eighty percent of a hundred thousand dollar study and we're kicking in twenty percent, uh, twenty thousand dollars to, to meet the requirement. And then the second item we're paying for is forty-three thousand dollars for Georgia Avenue Traffic Calming Study. Uh, and as uh, Ms. Hodges had uh, talked about earlier, as we look at improvements to Thirteenth Street Bridge uh, and other uh, traffic improvements, uh, this Georgia Avenue study will be required, a requirement for us to look at, you know, how we can uh, better handle uh, our traffic on Georgia Avenue, which is our main thoroughfare through our downtown. So that's sixty-three thousand dollars total to be reallocated uh, for those two studies. And Libby, if I uh, missed anything?
She's happy. Okay, thank you. Council, any comments or discussion? Mr. Dicker?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just want to say I, I think um, this is a good thing that we're doing specifically the Georgia Avenue Traffic Calming Study. I, I think that's something that needs to be done. Mr. Mayor's laughing because he and I were on the phone talking about this earlier today. Uh, but, but I do think this is a, a vital thing to, to help our downtown and um, something that's been discussed a lot. So uh, and the need to calm traffic down, slow down cars and, and to create more of a um, a downtown feel. And, and so I'm um, excited to see this and, and hope that uh, study helps provide the, the headwind to, to make some needed changes uh, in our downtown.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I agree with uh, Fletcher, you know, I think traffic calming was something we talked about almost the entire four years. It's been, been part of the discussion for the entire four years uh, that, that I've been mayor and I know it's a pet project uh, for a lot of people. Uh, and I think if we get it figured out and do it right, then it'll be a real benefit. And that's, I think, the benefit of getting people to understand what, what, what the options are and how to get it done will be uh, the very best way to then develop the plan and get it moving. So I, I think it's a great effort and I thank Libby for uh, jumping on this. Transportation is gonna, as we heard in the study session, gonna be an issue that's not gonna go away. Uh, it's only gonna get more attention in the coming uh, months and years. Uh, and if uh, we can get SC DOT to widen uh, I twenty from exit one to exit five, then Fletcher can leave with a big smile on his face, but we'll have, may have to wait on that, but we, we won't forget that you're the proponent of that, so. Uh, but it's a, it's a great thing and trust me, transportation is something that kind of Jim and I talk about almost every day, so I'm very much in favor of this.
Any others?
Well, I'm in favor too, uh, but let's don't calm traffic too much that you're gonna knock out your small businesses. Uh, but also till we can just figure out parking for downtown businesses. That's a big headache right now.
I agree. I mean, we are, I'm sure the businesses would like to be calm to the extent that people park and walk in the stores. So that would be uh, providing opportunities, you mentioned, for parking would be very, very good. Uh, any other comments? Hearing none, I'll call the question. Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Dicker?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Presnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Uh, the resolution is approved uh, unanimously, a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number ten. Uh, it's an engineering and public works action, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash ten. Authorizing the city administrator to execute a municipal lighting agreement with Dominion Energy, Dominion Energy, South Carolina, Inc. For the conversion of streetlights from high intensity discharge, a light emitting diode type fixtures and setting aside projected cost savings to offset potential future cost increases. Uh, the chair moves to approve this resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Who was first? I, Mr. Brooks? Okay, thank you both. Um, Jim, do you want, oh, it was David. Is that, Jim, do you want to talk about this?
Uh, yes, sir. So for our citizens at home. Uh, yes, sir. So for our citizens at home, uh, and anyone who missed the study session, I would say that, uh, this is a project that was initially brought to the, uh, the city council in January by, uh, Scott Neely of Dominion Energy. And this is a program run by Dominion Energy where they take the Dominion Energy light poles, uh, that are Dominion owned, uh, and then retrofit the lighting from the standard lighting, the HID lighting to LED lighting. Uh, it also allows Dominion Energy to be able to monitor those lights through an electronic system wherein if the light goes out, uh, due to whatever reason, uh, that Dominion is notified of that directly, uh, and they can respond in kind. That takes the, kind of the reporting, uh, requirement off the citizen, you know, or public safety or any other, uh, concerned, concerned person, uh, that wants to report to the city that a light is out somewhere. So that, that's helpful there. Uh, we've seen LED lighting in other parts of the city. Uh, you can see LED lighting, uh, right now in the municipal buildings, parking lot. There's a, uh, Department of Public Works project. So you can see what the effects of that are. And ultimately, I think this is a way that the region is starting to move. Uh, I think this is a good project for the city. So really this, uh, resolution does two things. One, it allows us to enter in this, this, um, agreement with Dominion Energy to allow them to retrofit their poles. And then the second thing it allows us to do is to bankroll the cost savings for the first five years in the capital projects fund as a set aside so that if we get increased energy costs after the five-year mark, we have a, a way to deal with that, uh, from year six and out, uh, so we don't get any unpleasant surprises, uh, from an energy bill perspective. And if at such time, uh, that those savings are realized beyond year five, uh, and we are still on that glide path, uh, then the future city council can then vote to reallocate, uh, those funds as they see fit. So those are the two things we're trying to accomplish, uh, with this, uh, resolution. Uh, and I am, uh, requesting, if you will, uh, city council's, uh, approval for this to allow us to move forward. What it doesn't do, uh, as we talked about in study session, is retrofit any ornamental lights or, uh, city-owned lights, and that will have to be a separate project that we can brief, uh, after we do some more analysis here in-house. Uh, serve counsel.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Uh, and, and as you remember, I think, counsel, when, when we had the initial presentation, uh, by Scott Neely, you know, they're projecting energy costs or costs associated with the current lights that we have, uh, to escalate quite rapidly, uh, which, uh, in the out years would save us money. And as I mentioned in one of my emails to you, that's a self-fulfilling prophecy since they, uh, control the rates. But, uh, we currently also think have a fixture, uh, installed at, um, Wood Lawn and East Avenue if you want to, uh, if anybody wants to go out and look, uh, and see how effective it is. So I, that's an opportunity for anybody right now. Uh, Mr. Brooks, do you have anything you want to say and comments?
No, sir.
Any comments from council? Okay, hearing none. Uh, let me call the question, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Dicker?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Presnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Uh, the resolution is approved by a vote, by unanimous vote of seven to zero. Thank you. Moving on to item number eleven, uh, this is resolution number twenty twenty-one dash eleven, the resolution authorizing funding allocation recommendations of the accommodations tax advisory committee for the disbursement of revenues from the accommodations tax year twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. Uh, do I have a motion to approve this resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Dicker, do I have a second?
Second.
I think I heard Mr. Tool first. All right, thank you. Uh, one thing I will do, uh, before we get into discussions, if I may, uh, Jim, let me elaborate. Uh, the total amount being allocated, uh, is seventy-four thousand two hundred forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. And, uh, the alloc, the approved request primarily which this tax and allocation is designed to put what they call heads in beds, I believe, uh, to get people to come to the city and, and stay. Uh, North Augusta Chamber, uh, is allocated seven thousand for, uh, map and lifestyle guide. Uh, twelve thousand five hundred is going to the Carsville Heritage District, uh, Visitors, uh, and Welcome Center. Uh, the Palmetto State Run for advertisement operations, uh, is ten thousand five hundred to North Augusta Forward. Uh, Living Park History, uh, advertisements, uh, for their events, the Old Town Preservation Association, five thousand eight hundred. Uh, the Rowing News Magazine advertisement related to Langley Pond, uh, this is the Aiken County Parks and Rec and Tourism, uh, for an amount of one thousand one hundred forty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Uh, the inaugural Rowing, Augusta Rowing Club Coaches Conference Advertisement and Operations, uh, seven thousand five hundred. Uh, concerts on, well, that was, uh, didn't have any, a complete application. Uh, the Sharon Jones Amphitheater, uh, dedication concert, uh, ten thousand dollars. Riverview Park Activity Center, streaming facility upgrade for the events that are, that are occurred there and are, uh, live streamed now for six thousand. And then the Pete's Jam Advertisement and Operations for a total of thirteen thousand seven hundred ninety-six dollars and eighty-five cent, making it a grand total of seven thousand two hundred and forty-four dollars and thirty-five cents. Uh, would, uh, Rick Meyer like to add anything? Or Jim, would you like to add anything?
Sir, I think you covered, uh, what I covered in the study session as far as the, uh, funds disbursement, uh, and also defer to Rick, uh, as far as the actual operations on, uh, some of the functions here within the amphitheater and the...
But again, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, Sharon Jones Amphitheater Concert is, is, uh, the grant is for helping us with the stage and sound for this one-time event, dedication and concert. Uh, that is what that grant is for. And I think you covered the Riverview Park pretty well, uh, for the live stream, uh, as well.
Now, on the FWB fund, uh, is the total the seventy-four two forty-four thirty-five cents? Is, that's excluding them? Is that all of those? So if they fill the application, will there be money for them or not?
Not at this cycle, no, ma'am. Uh, they'll...
I mean, was that because they just didn't do it or?
We don't know. Uh, correct, incomplete application.
Yeah, okay, all right.
I remember it's like a two-step process. Uh, and, and I guess if you don't get the paperwork and you don't get the grant considered.
Okay.
Any other comments from council? Okay, hearing none. I'll call the question, Mr. Brooks?
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mr. Dicker?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Presnell?
Yes.
Mr. Tool?
Yes.
The chair also votes yes. Uh, the resolution is approved by a vote of, uh, unanimous vote of seven to zero. And that concludes, uh, the active items on the agenda. Uh, Jim, are there any administrative reports or Rachel tonight that you want to present?
I'll turn it over to Rachel first.
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the only thing I had is the discussion on, uh, the envision topics. Uh, I've had some feedback from council. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about that in this forum or...
I'd like a little more time to consider it and then discuss it with staff.
Then I have no administrative reports for, uh, the...
Okay. Counsel, any comments? There, there are no citizen comments tonight.
Well, the envision, it is open to the public, right?
Pardon? Yes.
The vision, okay. I didn't know, uh, you know, candidates that are running for election in April, uh, I presume they know they would be invited to this.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I believe they've been advised of it already. Is that right, Sharon? You're shaking your head, yes.
That all candidates, Democrat and Republican?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Question on that subject. Um, I mean, generally it's for us discussing, but I, you know, I, I might feel that this is just a little premature considering three weeks later we're going to have a new mayor, possibly two new council members. Uh, I mean, will they be invited to participate as well too? Or are they just there to, you know, to just, just hear what we're discussing?
No, the, the, I mean, I think the, I didn't necessarily see the invitation that was sent to them, but I know the discussions I had that they would have an, uh, ample opportunity, all of the candidates, uh, to make contributions.
Councilman, I believe the way we have it structured now is that, um, during the, uh, the original sessions that the, the staff presents and that, uh, council gets to deliberate, and then there's going to be a, a period at the tail end of that where the, uh, non-incumbent, uh, candidates are, are going to be given an opportunity to weigh in on, on their thoughts and then open it up to the general public for, uh, other discussions about those topics. That's the current image.
A three-phased approach, if you will, uh, providing an opportunity for the candidates for office to, uh, contribute, uh, as part of, you know, after the discussion is had held, presented, uh, and then give them an opportunity. And then if there are other members of the public present, that they will then also be given an opportunity to, you know, make comments and contribute to the discussion.
Okay, that, that sounds good. I just wanted to make sure they were included just because, you know, obviously we're fixing to have some new members. Uh, the other thing I want to bring up, and I brought it up last meeting, um, is there any reason we can't go back to in-person? I, I personally do not like this format, and I've had several people asking, you know, when are we going back? Um, I mean, our state is on the decline. The governor has, you know, rescinded a lot of his executive orders. So is there any reason why we're continuing to do the, the virtual versus going back in-person? I, I feel like we get more done and can get more discussed than we can on a computer. That might just be me and, you know, I don't know how everybody else feels, but I just want to throw that out there and see if there's any reason why we shouldn't go back.
May I say something? Mr. Mayor, may I say something on that subject?
Certainly.
Come back to me.
Okay. And I'll, I'll start and then I'll, I'll let Jim, uh, jump in because we've had the discussion. You know, we're, we're not out of, out of the woods on this. Uh, you know, people are still getting sick. Uh, and I don't know how many of, I know I've received both, and I guess I can publicly, I can say it, you can't. I've received both of my vaccination shots. Uh, and I, I still take precautions, uh, wearing a mask in public, uh, the washing of hands and everything else that goes along with it because there are a large percentage of the people who have not been vaccinated who, uh, for one reason or another, uh, may have medical conditions, uh, personal desire not to get the vaccine. But until we get this, in my opinion, until we get it really under control for routine meetings such as, such as tonight, uh, to, to present the opportunity for a large number of people to attend the meeting, uh, it's difficult to control, uh, their proximity to one another and the exposure, uh, potential that, uh, this forum, I think, provides it. I can tell you that the May third meeting, uh, will be in-person. Uh, that will be for the, uh, transition, the, uh, the big thing that night will be two big things. One, approving election, uh, results and the swearing in of the, uh, council members, the, the three council members and, and the mayor in this case certainly, uh, for the next term. Uh, but you know, I, while I understand that it feels more comfortable maybe to sit with somebody in the room and, and look and be there, you know, it's not necessarily all about us, although it's certainly important for us, but it's about those citizens that might be attending, uh, and you don't know who you're next to. Uh, it's very, you know, it's impossible sometimes to know where, uh, your contact is. And I just feel that if we have a need for a public meeting on something, we would do it. I think that's much preferable than trying then doing that on, uh, Zoom or go to meeting because, but I know it's been done successfully. Uh, you know, and, and, uh, if there's controversial item, we'll get it there as well, uh, where we can expect a large public, uh, participation. But that in essence is almost self-defeating because we're certainly preparing the, presenting the opportunity for people to come, uh, in, in a large gathering. Uh, and speaking at a microphone with masks on is difficult. So that's my sense on it. Uh, Jim and Bob, you want me to come back to you now or is it a good time?
Yes, now's a good time. Haven't experienced, um, COVID-19 in my own family. It's for real. And I think we need to continue monitoring it. And I don't foresee us meeting until maybe the first of May and then go back to virtual. And then maybe in June, they'll come back, probably give it a try again. But my family has lost two people. And COVID is a deadly thing. So I caution you young folks, if you don't wear masks, if you don't soc, if you don't distance yourself, you're prime candidates. And this stuff is really bit, really bad. It will destroy lungs and it will destroy people. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Jim, do you want to add anything?
Sir, I think, uh, you both highlighted it well. I think the current, um, line of thinking from the staff is that we would do the next two, uh, city council meetings, uh, virtually using the go-to-meeting format. We absolutely want to be in-person for the swearing in of a new council, uh, and then I think we can make a, a determination, uh, based on, you know, mayor and council's guidance at the May, uh, meeting about whether we're going to move to, uh, uh, in-person format from there on out or whether we remain, uh, in a virtual setting from that point. So I think we'll have a decision point in front of us, uh, in, you know, at the third council meeting from now, the, the first one in May. Uh, and so that's the current line of thinking, but obviously the staff will, uh, accede to the wishes of, uh, mayor and council, uh, depending on...
You know, it's kind of interesting, uh, as I look at the screen in front of me, more than half have either had it or had a family member have it that I'm aware of. And so that, that, that says, and, and it's been, you know, over months, I recognize that. Uh, but this is a group of people who are concerned and care, uh, and just think of the impact that it's had on us. And, you know, I don't wish that on anybody and, uh, doing our best, as I said earlier, to minimize, you know, the opportunities for, uh, people to come and be, and to be exposed inadvertently. That's, uh, that, that, again, I'm just repeating myself. I apologize, but I feel, uh, that that's something we don't want to do. So any other comments? Mr. Dicker?
Yeah, if I can, uh, changing subjects, and this is geared towards Rick Meyer, if he's still on. Um, I saw posted on social media today by, by some that it looks like maybe the Greenway marking system that, uh, we've talked about as being implemented and, and put into place for nine-one-one. Um, if that's the case, could, Rick, would you mind? Um, if that's the case, could, Rick, would you mind commenting on that and maybe updating council and the public on it?
Absolutely, thank you, Fletcher. This is a a marking system that will uh be every tenth of a mile and will give uh a location for folks in terms of emergencies on the Greenway. They'll be able to call nine-one-one and public safety will be able to locate them so much faster. You know, we had some issues over the last year where we had some uh potential uh health problems on the Greenway and we were fortunate that we didn't lose anyone and and this is a proactive uh uh measure uh to try to prevent that in the future, allow our public safety and medical emergency folks to to find the location of people on the Greenway ASAP. And the staff did get started with with putting them out Friday. I'm afraid the weather this week right now, unless it improves, is gonna gonna slow us down a little bit, but just as soon as it improves, we plan to finish uh this task.
Thank you, Rick, and I assume all this is for the public's sake, all this has been coordinated with uh EMS and public safety, so if they tell them a number, they're gonna, the correct people or the other, the people on the other end of the line are gonna know where they are.
That is correct. We are working with with Chief Thomas and uh kudos to Kevin, Kevin Whaley and Carl Waldhauer, two staff members for the city that are that are taking on this project and doing a great job in coordinating everything for the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Fletcher, for bringing it up and Rick for adding uh Fletch uh on that program. I think it happens more than we're aware, where people get into trouble of one sort or another on the on the Greenway and need help. So that's a great idea, uh and I'm glad we're getting it done. And I think Fletcher's point is, it's one thing for me to know where I am, but it's certainly helpful that the other people know when I say where I am that they can find me. Uh, so that's that's great for that, appreciate it.
Kudos, kudos for Fletcher, cause he was pushing pushing on it too, yep.
He's been known to do that on occasion. And in the right direction too, I'll add. Any other comments from anyone? Okay. Sharon Jones Concert and Dedication and Concert is April twenty-fourth, uh the Masters is coming up pretty quick. Uh, so there's a lot gonna be happening uh in the local area over the next uh thirty days or so, so uh let's all stay healthy and I appreciate it. This meeting's adjourned.